I'd like to call the order of the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board Meeting, and I'd ask the clerk to take the roll.
Bozen.
Here.
Simonsen.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
We have a forum.
Next item is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The item three is approving the issuance of 40 project-based vouchers, EVV, Monarch Apartments at 4845 Merrill Hay Road, Board Communication number 24-506.
I'll move item.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item four is a motion to adjourn.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If we need to take a vote. Do you need to vote?
I read everybody's.
What was that?
They said aye, so.
We'll reconvene at 5:00 for the regular meeting. 2024 DeMoyne City Council Meeting, please take the roll. Excuse me, we're starting the meeting. Here.
Simonsen.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a forum.
Number two item is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Number three is approving the consent agenda. Those are items three through 39. These are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules, council requests an item to be removed to be considered separately. These are the items, 4DD is updated in Class C liquor license for Mad Hatter events on December 20th through the 21st, 2024. 16A, B, C, and E, applications rescinded on the regular items. 43B has been added. Final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant requires six votes. And 56 is updated speaker list.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next is the hearings. Item number 40, on conveyance of vacated alley right of way located west of and adjoining 822 Southeast 12th Street to Michael Cortez for $50. We have Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person, 10 minutes maximum, anyone wishing to speak to this. Anyone have any discussion? If not.
I'll move it. I'll move item 40. Me and Josh always get this area a little confused.
Okay, and would somebody like to second that? Okay, thank you. It moved and seconded, please vote.
It might be. You have that side of the road or something.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 41, on request from Michael Renovations LLC, Michael Grunberg, Officer for property located in the vicinity of 62949 Street, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan, revise the future land use classification of the property from low-density residential to high-density residential, and to rezone the property from N5-4 Neighborhood District to Limited NX2 Neighborhood Mixed District to allow the reconstruction of an existing covered parking structure retaining wall. Require six votes for approval due to the neighborhood opposition. A, first consideration of ordinance above. B, final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant, requires six votes. First is the party of interest applicant for rezoning and those within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned will be given up to five minutes to speak. Second is Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, 20 minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? You want to come up and state your name and address?
Sure, Michael. Michael Grunberg with Michael Renovations, 4001 Kais Grove. And I'm just looking to rebuild, reconstruct the carport. This is originally constructed in 1923. It had covered parking originally, and I just want to put it back the way it was. Talked to the neighbors at a neighborhood meeting. Some of the neighbors came down and were talking about the issue with the property. I didn't get any feedback from anybody saying, "Don't reconstruct the carport because they don't want people barking out on the street." It was a good idea for them. The issue that I was getting as far as feedback was concerned was is that they didn't like the fact that it was being rezoned. So it's being rezoned at 21 units, which is what it actually is. It's six buildings, it's five duplexes. Once again, I said it was constructed in 1923. So, you know, when you send out that little flyer or something, you say, "Are you with this or are you against it?" The neighbors with the comments were like, "We want the guy to rebuild his carport, he's a good neighbor." But the issue they had was rezoning it for 21 units. I did say that I would say that I would ask if there was another way to do it, like get a conditional use just to reconstruct the carports as is, and then working with a design committee for planning and zoning. But I said I would say that, but they, you know, it wasn't anything to do with the carport, it was the rezoning issue. And then, of course, there's something going on down off 57th Street in Grand, and there's a lot of "Don't rezon our neighborhood" signs going on in Grand. And that doesn't really have anything to do with me. I'm in the general vicinity of that issue there. So I do need the carports redone. It's beneficial for the properties. A lot of people there don't even realize that those are actually apartments over there, and there is six different addresses there, although it's all considered to be one big apartment complex because there's so many places. So I would really like to get the ability to reconstruct those carports, but I realize there is some neighborhood opposition, and I think it's the system there going after having to rezon it and it hadn't have anything to do with the fact that I want to, you know, rebuild those, reconstruct the carports.
You, just to clarify, you already agreed to conditions and zoning.
Yeah, they put some restrictions.
That addresses the neighborhood concern, at least from my read of the packet, right?
Yeah, the planning and zoning was trying to restrict future use. I don't want to have a financial incentive for somebody to come in and redo the place at all. I've been there since 2000, and I don't want that financial incentive there, so that's what they were talking about, putting some restrictions on the property so that it would reduce that ability to have that. I, you know, I don't think that anybody would want to redo those places, but, I mean, they worked within the system to try to, you know, I don't know, put up roadblocks, I suppose, for the future for that sort of system there. So I think I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wanting to speak?
Not Jermaine. I don't have sort of 50 people.
Okay, so we'll go into general comments, or Jermaine comments, and you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Carol Maher. I live in Ward Three downtown Des Moines, and I appreciate that the focus of this request had to come through this way because the gentleman just wanted to rebuild his carports, and that's really great. Unfortunately, what it turned out to be is a limitation on zoning. It's great that it was, it's going to be zoned to a more dense situation, but it's unfortunate that we're limiting that zoning opportunity to no more than 21 units and no more than two and a half stories, because we don't know in the future what may be appropriate for there, and I think it's perhaps a little short-sighted to make, to put those conditions on there, especially in a neighborhood as desirable as Waterbury, where renters would love to live. So I'm all for the zoning change, I just wish it hadn't included such restrictive covenants. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I'll open it up to the council.
Yeah, I'll move item 41, 41A and 41B. And folks have a chance to drive by these units. They're nice, I mean, they're kept up well, they're nice units, they fit within the character of the neighborhood. It shows what can be done to add a little density in a neighborhood like that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 42, on request from 36th and 6th LLC, Tim Bratvold, Officer for property located at 3614 6th Avenue and 3612 6th Avenue, to rezone the property from MX1 Mixed Use District to MX2 Mixed Use District to allow an existing building to be used for an eating and drinking places bar use, which requires a conditional use in the MX2 District. A is first consideration of ordinance above, B is the final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant, and it requires six votes. Again, the same amount of speaking time. I will open that up, so if anyone in the part, the applicant would like to come forward, if they would like to speak, you have five minutes.
Good evening. Tim Bratvold, owner of 3614 6th Avenue, here to request the rezoning for the property to allow for eating and drinking places bar down in the lower level of decline building. The revitalization going on in Highland Park has allowed us to come across 3614 6th Avenue. It's a very challenging redevelopment project, and we have a great opportunity to provide an entertainment and social atmosphere up in the neighborhood and to be able to utilize this lower-level space to help with the revitalization of the building. One of the biggest concerns on our end that we're trying to work through with the city is the tenant is intending to provide some food, they're just unsure as to how much. This lower-level space does not provide enough space for a full-on kitchen, and so rather than going down the process and hoping that, hey, we hope that we exceed that 50%, the intent was to come forward with the plans and talk about some of the challenges to be able to be transparent about what the intended use is down there and some of the offerings.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? There's open to the people, not the party, just Jermaine comments. Seeing none.
Seeing none, I will move item 42, 42A and B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Five yes, two abstains, so B would not.
Motion carries. Right, no, it's 6-1. Oh, that's right on this one. Okay, so this will come back?
For this.
Because I haven't had that before.
Does it come back?
Yeah, it had less than six.
Oh, for the second.
Okay, so since we've had to have two abstain, we will bring this item back, I believe, at the next meeting?
Next council meeting, right?
Okay.
And then we can waive the second and third at that time or no? Oh, it still takes six.
Six.
Okay. So it won't be until January that it'll be approved?
Right.
Okay.
It will always, if there is, if you want to waive.
If we get, if we have five votes, we got to do it three straight meetings.
Yeah.
Will this impact them going before Board of Adjustment on the 18th? Sorry, guys.
I guess that's, that's the vote that was taken. Okay, item 43, on request from JC AM Group LLC, John Cheng, Officer for the following regarding property located at 1419 Pennsylvania Avenue, to rezone the property from N3C Neighborhood District to Limited N3C-2 Neighborhood District to allow reuse of the existing structure for duplex use continued from November 18th, 2024 council meeting. A is first consideration of ordinance above, B is final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant, requires six votes. Again, first is the parties of interest, applicant for the rezoning, and those within 250 feet. Is anyone wishing to speak to this? If not, we'll open it up to general comments. Seeing no one.
Seeing none, I'll move item 43, 43A and 43B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
Make a comment or an observation. Since that was rezoning to allow a duplex use, I mean, I think we're maybe at the point where we should be thinking about duplex use in more, more places by right so that folks don't have to go through rezoning for something like that.
Okay, we can look into that.
So just wanted to, since that is coming up, make that point.
Okay, number 44, on approval of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, substantial amendment to the Home Investment Partnership Program, American Rescue Plan Allocation Plan, Home-ARP, Council Communication number 24-503, will offer Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes to speak, is anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing no one, I will.
Move item 44, Your Honor.
Moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 45, on 2025 Neighborhood Sidewalk Program Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, and Receive and File Bids, Council Communication number 24-491. General comments may, general public may comment only on to the plans, specifications, form of documents, engineers estimate, or low bidder designation, and those will be the only comments to be considered, Jermaine. Two minutes per person, up to 10 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one.
Move item 45, Your Honor.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 46, on 41st Street and Beaver Avenue Intersection Improvements, Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bitter as Inroads LLC, Joseph J. Minette, CEO, $545,975.50. Council Communication number 24-486. A is approval of contract and bond. Again, two minutes per person to speak, anyone wishing to speak on this? Seeing no one, I'll open up.
I would just say this is at the intersection of three great neighborhoods out in Ward One, and it's probably the most talked-about intersection in the 25 years I've been following city politics.
It's the most complicated one.
It's a complicated one, but I appreciate everybody working on this. I had some exchange with our, our city engineer today. This is a really good process going forward, and it should be complete next season, which is doubly great. So if you don't know which one it is, it's the Snuggies. I should probably self-disclose that 20 years ago, my daughter worked at Snuggies and my son worked at Dolls. Does that conflict me out now?
I don't think so.
I will, I will move this, thank the neighborhoods and everybody that's continued to, to fight for a safer intersection there.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 47, on Central Place Lovey Trail Phase One Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bitter as Peterson Contractors, Inc., Cordell Peterson, President, for $1,402,42. Council Communication number 24-490. A is approval of contract and bond. Again, two minutes per person, anyone wishing to speak to this? If not.
Seeing none, I'll move item 47, 47A, do you have comments?
I would like to second this one, but, but this is a really great project in an area that had no trails previously. I think there are two half-million-dollar grants on this and an additional, maybe like $100,000, so.
It's a great connector.
Yeah, this is a great connection. Ben, do you know, does this include the Chautauqua Neighborhood, Neighborhood Connector in this also or not? Or maybe that's in the next phase?
I think that's another phase.
Bring a map, that's helpful.
Mayor Bozen, members of the Des Moines City Council, Ben Page, Parks and Recreation Director. On the screen, you see, if you can see that real well, is the first phase is down by the Women of Achievement Bridge where my finger is, right by the Lordston Skate Park, and it'll go all the way up there to Second Avenue. That's that red dash, that's what you're voting on tonight.
Okay.
Phase two, you'll see that there is not only the connection all the way up to the interurban bridge, but some neighborhood connections which are really important to get the neighborhoods safely into the trail system.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded? Any other comments?
Great job.
Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is number 49, or 48, sorry, I'm ahead of mine. On George Flag Parkway and Fluor Drive Floodgate Closure Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designate the Lowest Responsible Bitter as WRH, Inc., James G. Rich, President, for So Council Communication number 24-487. A is approval of contract and bond. Again, two minutes for each person that would like to speak, up to 10 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak?
Seeing none, I'll move item 48 and 48A.
Moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 49, on Woodland Cemetery Road Construction Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bitter as TK Concrete, Inc., Tony J. Vermeer, President, $262,124. Council Communication number 24-489. A is approval of contract and bond. Anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing no one.
I'll move item 49 and 49A.
It's been.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 50, items regarding the Sayers Park Sprayground Project. A is approving the supplemental agreement number one to professional services agreement with Bolton &amp; Mink, Inc. Incorporated, for additional work on the Sayers Park Sprayground design not to exceed $66,500. Council Communication number 24-482. And B is a hearing approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, and engineers estimate on Sayers Park Sprayground, receive and file bids, and designation of the lowest Responsible Bitter as the Henley Group LLC, Tyler Henley, President, for $1,146,375.60. Council Communication number 24-483. And number one is approval of contract and bond. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
Seeing none, I'll move item 50, 50A, B, and B1.
Yes.
For Ben, again, sorry, Ben, it's a long walk, you know, you should just take a seat up closer to the front.
Can we get a second real quick?
Second.
Okay, it's been, okay, it's been moved and seconded, so Ben.
So, Ben, when this spray ground gets completed, how many more spray grounds will there be in the Des Moines Parks system?
Mayor Bozen, members of Des Moines City Council, Ben Page, Parks and Recreation Director, there is technically one left that will be in operation this year, Ashfield Park on the east side is the last one. We have two waiting pools, sorry. And so you're asking how many we have spray ground-wise?
No, how many?
Josh is right. After this waiting pool is removed and rebuilt as a spray ground, how many more waiting pools?
There will be zero waiting pools left after Ashfield.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? If not, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Number 51, on East 8th Street and East Market Street Pump Station, Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designate the Lowest Responsible Bitter as Henkel Construction Company, Kent Brecker, Council Communication number 24-488. A is approval of contract and bond. Again, if anyone would like to speak, please come forward, you'll have two minutes. State your name and address or work.
Hi, Mayor Bozen, members of the City Council, my name is Carol Maher. I live in Ward Three downtown. As you know, I spend a lot of time coming to meetings, boards, commissions, committees, things like that, and I've added the Urban Design Review Board to my schedule of, of things, fun things to do. And the first one I went to was on October 1st when this was presented to the board, and one of the things that the. And one of the things that the Urban Design Review Board recommended, because this is a wet bottom thing, lake-like receptive for all this water that's going to be sitting there. They asked that erators be reviewed to potentially be included since there's going to be water sitting there all the time. It's not a dry basin. And that an update would be provided on the 1015 UDRB. That update never came. And when I look at the specifications, it does not include any aeration. So I was hoping that that was at least considered and presumably determined not to be needed. But I also noticed that Urban Design Review Board minutes or recommendations are not really included very robustly in the package, unlike the P&amp;Z stuff. So I think there might be an opportunity there to include what they recommend for the review for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, if not.
Yeah, I'll move item 51 and 51A.
Second.
Been moved in second, please vote.
Got him.
Oh, me.
Seven, yes.
Sorry.
Motion carries. Item 52 on East Army Post Road and Southeast 36th Street Roundabout. Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' estimate, receive and file bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bitter as Minette's Incorporated, Brian L. Minette, President, Council Communication Number 24-485. A is Approval of Contract and Bond. Would anyone wish to speak to this? If not, I'll turn it over to the council.
I see none, Your Honor. Long time coming, I'd say. It's probably been talked about for the last three years. I'm glad to see it finally on the agenda. We're going to get it built. I'll move 52, 52A.
Second on that, but I have a question for Steve. So Steve, when we first started talking about this, there was discussion, could the roundabout include public art? And since that time, I think there's been two or three different directors of the Public Art Foundation. I know that the contract would, that we're about to approve would not include public art. But is there an option? Is there space to have public art in the roundabout? And you know, maybe you have a feeling about the appropriateness of public art in a roundabout.
Yep. Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, Steve Nabors, City Engineer. So to answer the question, yeah, there could be space where art could go within the circle. And we've seen roundabouts in the metro do that. And as you mentioned, this roundabout in the contract is just going to have a landscaping, which is similar to other roundabouts in the metro where it kind of toward the center of the island will be like prior grasses. But certainly in the future, there could be space for artwork. Should, depending on what it is, if it's, as long as it's not a, maybe presenting a hazard to the public, you know. So in other words, you know, like maybe a big concrete.
Sure. So if someone in the public art arena wanted to at least have discussions about this, who in your department could they or should they talk to?
They could start with me, and I could connect them to our traffic folks that would be able to answer at least what type of space would be able to work with and whatnot.
I think it'd be important to know what it's going to be first.
Yeah.
I know this is the first one in that area. I know people have been cautiously optimistic. We'll leave it at that since not a lot of folks are used to it.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of kids that use this particular intersection for Carlisle High School coming out of the Eastern Lake area. So I know that is a big concern, and we would just want to make sure the safety aspect, we're all, we've seen it many times, the public art on different ones in different areas of the county. I don't think anyone would be opposed to it, but let's make sure the safety aspect, what it would be first before we put it there, obviously.
Okay, so we'll engage if we have someone that wants to promote public art. There's a public art group that you sit on that.
And the role of the Public Art Foundation is to approve any artwork that is proposed to be put on public land.
Okay.
And so that's what their role is, is just to approve that to make sure that it's appropriate. They do undertake some campaigns. You know, we've got the public art at the airport, but that was mostly privately funded. Most of those projects are funded. The public artists actually have to do this with.
It's been probably moved.
So different cities, different cities that you see them in, the cities have purchased it, or it's a private donor that's.
Private donor or whatever their arrangement is. I know Pleasant Hill.
Yeah, that's one in particular.
Yeah, Pleasant Hill has one.
They got money, I think, from Bravo. Does that interact with some of the public?
It's not a very busy one yet, that roundabout.
They had to raise, they had to raise a lot.
Okay, thank you. Been moved and seconded. And we all need to vote, yes? House McCollum?
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. And that is the end of the hearings. It is now 5:32. Next item is number 54. It's a repeal and replace Chapter 61 of the Municipal Code Relating to Property Maintenance and Vacant Property. Council Communication Number 24-505. A is Final Consideration of Ordinance Above. Waiver requested by Chris Johansson, Neighborhood Services Director. Requires six votes.
Mayor, I'd like to talk about this. I have a few things that, this is the first time this, we've talked about the idea of property maintenance for quite a while, but this is the first time that the code has been in front of us. And I have a few things that I'd like to see changed in this code. Part of why we've been talking about this so long is that we wanted to get the ION program in place as the safety net. And I'd like to see the safety net referenced in the code a bit more because I think this new foray into the property maintenance, the concern I have is that there are residents who are senior, who are fixed income, who are disabled, or who may be multi-generational in a household who don't have the means to maintain their house. And the proper ION was meant to be sort of that backup for those folks so that they can comply with a code like this. And I'd just like to see that kind of built into the code a little bit better. And so I had three things, two that I care about more than the third that were the changes that I was hoping to see. The first was in Section 61-6, where we create exemptions for the requirements. And I'd like to create a specific exemption. You know, the first exemption is if someone has a contractor and is under construction and has applied for a building permit. That makes sense. The second is if it's a government building. I'd like there to be a third exception for someone who might be on the waitlist for ION. So if you have applied for ION and you're on the list and through no fault of your own, it's funding limitations or whatever, there are too many folks ahead of you, you're unable to fix this. I'd like the fact that you have made the effort and are in the ION program to be an exemption from the requirements. And so that would just be an amendment to 61-6. The second piece that I would be interested in, although maybe staff has.
What was the first section?
So it's 61.6. It's the exemption section. And so I think you'd have to change a word. The first sentence is, "Property shall be exempt from the requirements of this chapter either of the following." If either would need to be any. And then there needs to be a subpart C with some wording to incorporate if someone is.
Within that program of ION, wanting to have, okay.
I have that. It's Section 61-6, the exemptions.
Okay, that's.
There is another exemption thing further in it, but let me look for that.
The second piece, I would also be interested. I think we have a provision that allows for a request of administrative hearing, and we provide seven days for that. I'd be interested in a slightly longer period. I know for, I think we do this for things like nuisance or others. But given that this is a little bit different, I'd be interested in a slightly longer time period than just seven days to request an administrative hearing. I think 30 days is, I think, the time to request a court hearing. And so the administrative route, if we were doing court route rather than administrative, we'd give someone 30 days. I'd feel a little more comfortable there. That piece is less of a priority, but I think that, just given the nature of this, I'd feel more comfortable with the 30. And that's in Section 61-18 is what I saw. And then the last piece that I had is in, it's the reference to ION at the very end. Give me a second to scroll down. And again, I wanted to tie this. So one of the things that, this is Section 61-85. And in the ordinance, it says, "The City Council shall have the right to suspend or terminate this program." And I would feel more comfortable if ION and the enforcement of the property maintenance were tied together. And so I'd like to add at the end of that, if the council is making a big change and ION is going away, I'd like to say enforcement, and I don't know how to word it exactly to get to narrow it, but I'd prefer that if we exercise that authority as a council and we suspend or terminate ION, enforcement of the property maintenance would be suspended along with that program being suspended. So those are the changes that I would want to make. And again, all of that is in the context of ION is meant to be the safety net for the property maintenance. Those are just changes that I think tie the safety net together with these code changes. And like I said, I don't know if that wording is the right way to do it, but this was the first time this weekend that I had a chance to review this language. And I think that's in the spirit of all the conversation that we've had today.
I have some response, mainly because I'm not well-versed or educated on the ION application process. But your first suggestion to me, if we, if the waiting list is free-for-all, you apply, you get on the waiting list, it would be a good, it would be a good way to get out of it by, the word on the street is just apply for ION and you're exempt from it. If the waiting list for ION was a group of qualified, pre-approved, you know, we believe there, we believe we have the capability of providing service in the next 24 months or whatever it is, then I would be okay. But what I wouldn't want to do is to create a workaround of enforcement by everybody simply applying for ION and being on a waiting list.
I mean, I'm good with.
Yeah, I think with working out different wording.
Right, I'm good with, I mean, we have, there are income qualifications for ION, right? And so if someone is qualified for ION, the piece where I'm concerned is if, because we have this in place, all of a sudden, there are a lot of folks we're enforcing on, we get a lot of applications, and we have a two, three-year waitlist for ION, that someone who is eligible for ION doesn't have the stress of the city enforcing on them as long as they've taken the steps to apply and they're waiting to get funding that they are eligible for. I don't want it to be a workaround that they can just apply and not be eligible as a way to just delay and put a cog in.
But you would delay it two to three years if funding wasn't there to fix the property?
But if it's someone who can't afford to fix the property, which is if you're eligible for ION, I would be okay. The idea being they've taken the steps to get the help they need from the city to be able to fix it.
And so you'd be pre-approved is what? Before, before you would, before we would go there and cite any of this, they had already applied for ION and are pre-approved. We just haven't, they just haven't got the funding to fix it yet. I'm fine with that. But going and allowing someone to have an out to where they can go apply after they're in violation and get on the list, that's where we're going to have an issue because then you could be two to three years down the line where maybe you should have applied sooner.
Can we do this? Approve the first reading with the, and with the, then say that we will come back with the wording, draft new based on the recommendations? Because I think we're all having, instead of trying to wordsmith it here.
Sure.
We know the intent. We know that we want to make ION the safety net program, which we already have.
Yep.
And then we can determine if the language is what has been brought up here. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
I move item 54.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Mayor, I would like to thank you for advancing this. You know, this was one of your initiatives and.
Thank you. I think the, what we've seen in the ION program has been very impactful. And I think we can work around how we can make sure the people that most can't afford aren't, this isn't a penalty. This is to, for people that probably can't afford or for, we have the safety net, that those could be the first people to get it, maybe if we deem that these properties are in such, that they might not have applied, but now we have an ION. We can say, this is what you need to do. So I think the longer, will help more people, more impact.
Mayor, if I could, my apologies and catch it before the vote. There were three items there. I have what I need for two. The third item was a 30-day timeframe to appeal. Was that part of the desire of the council?
I assume so.
Thirty day, I think let's get through some of it. And if it's two weeks, or if it's a 30-day, how does the implications? I think you, I think our staff needs to look at it and see what the implications are.
Seven days is too short, I agree. But I don't think we need to maybe stretch all the way.
And has, have we voted?
Yeah.
Okay, so as long as Dan is in the room. Dan, you have an awesome staff. I mean, any of the neighborhood meetings that I go to, they're just held in really high regard. They're a great, caring crew, so thanks.
To put in context, that's the improving our neighborhood staff. In fact, I had a lady call me just last week to tell me how great they were and how beneficial it's been. And it made the difference of her being able to stay in her home. So again, thank you to your staff and the work that all of the. Really, yeah, she's on the South Side. So to everybody in that department, thank you for the work you've been doing.
Fixed your basement. Nice work, Dan.
So on that, the next item is 55. Amending Chapter 74 of the Municipal Code Relating to Parks and Recreation. Council Communication Number 24-500. A, Final Consideration of Ordinance Above. Waiver requested by Ben Page, Parks and Recreation Director. Requires six votes. B is the Approval of Updated City of Des Moines Park and Recreation Rules. Council Communication Number 24-501.
I'll move 55A and B.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven, yes. Seven, yes.
Motion carries. The next item is our request to speak. We provide speakers under the public speaking portion the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each, for up to twenty speakers for a total of one hour on the agenda. Speakers will be called forward individually, and we ask everyone to please state their name and address or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep comments germane and avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. As a reminder to the council and the public, this public speaking time is not a time for the council to engage in discussion. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or council follow-up at a time after the meeting. And thank you for your support of Des Moines, we have one speaker, Giada Morrissey.
Good evening, council, I'm Giada Morrissey, I live in Ward One. I saw that there were no people signed up to speak and couldn't let you get off that easy, so I'm here to speak to you tonight. And I think it'd be cool if I got the full thirty minutes to talk to you all, but I know you wouldn't be able to handle that, so I'll just get started. As always, I need to mention that it's really shameful that there's no virtual option for city council meetings, no way for people to engage virtually, aside from watching a live stream, which does not offer any opportunity for engagement, simply one-sided. Very disappointing that the city still does not offer that. I have a number of things that I'd like to speak about tonight, but I will begin with something that was in the news a couple of weeks ago just prior to the Thanksgiving holiday, which was the eviction of a camp at, on the north side of town near the Des Moines River. The city claims that an eviction notice was posted at Riverview Park. However, this camp is not at Riverview Park, in the woods, closer to the bike trail. Campers there claim that they never saw a notice posted, and these campers have a long history of appealing notices with the city. So had they noticed that, a notice, had they noticed a notice, they would have taken the opportunity to appeal that or seek other recourse, however, they did not notice the notice that was posted. And so what I'm just here to say is, you know, don't, first of all, stop evicting people who have nowhere else to go. They're there in the woods, not because they choose to, there are some who choose to. By and large, those people would like to live in homes, and many of them have jobs, and many of them would like to not only survive but thrive in this community. It's really disappointing to see that they were evicted from this camp with no notice, they had no idea that they were coming, that the bulldozers were coming. And in, as with many, if not all, other camp evictions, those staff from Public Works or whoever that are coming in aren't cleaning up the camp, they're just bulldozing over everything, so that it's ruined, including people's personal prized possessions, including their ID, their documentation, family mementos, photos, everything that they have, they're not cleaning it up out of the woods, they're just leaving it there as a mark to tell other people that that's not a safe place to camp. And that's really disheartening, not only from a human rights perspective, but also as a park user, a trail user, to see just the litter in the woods, and then to hear, oh, well, you know, we spent so much money cleaning it up, it's not cleaned up. It's not cleaned up. And you can go to almost any wooded area in the city and see where boulders or stuff come through, and you can see where the tire tracks are, but it's not being cleaned up. So that's what I wanted to start with. The city still continues to have no overnight warming centers. There have been multiple years that I've come up and I've spoken about this, or I've emailed you, or I've done other work to try and get warming centers to be opened. There's a list that Polk County shares every year, about the same list.
Thank you for your comments.
I'll move item fifty-six A to receive and file our comments.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries.
Motion adjourned, Your Honor.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.